Ready? I want to call everybody's attention for this is the start of the Plan Commission, June 27th, 2024. This is a work session. It's not your typical meeting, so we're going to be hopefully getting information provided to us so it can help us make decisions. Ty, you want to clue this in for us?
Can we go ahead and take roll, please?
Yes, roll call, please.
Mrs. Barnhart, Mr. Colteis.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Ms. Mraz, Mr. Miller, Mr. Burrows, Ms. Slonaker.
Here.
Mr. Hosttler.
Here. Thank you for correcting me there.
You're fine. So today's work session was brought to you by request from last meeting in May. The desire was to bring in Tom Abbott, who was the previous fire chief out of Surprise, Arizona. We had him set up to actually be with us via Zoom. And unfortunately, last week, we were notified he has some personal matters he had to attend to, and he was no longer to be able, he was no longer able to attend via Zoom or at all at this point. But he was able to provide us with a name for a previous fire lieutenant out of the Fire Department of New York, named Paul Rogers. He's, he was with Fire Department of New York for over 25 years, went through the Bureau of Fire Prevention, and was actually a project lead on the energy storage systems, earning a title of subject matter expert for ESS, and actually works for a company named ESRG. Those initials should sound familiar to you because it's actually in correlation with and have been hired and contracted by Tenaska. Neither party knew, us nor Tenaska, knew that either we're talking with different founding members of ESRG because their contact has been with a gentleman by the name of Tom. And when Tom Abbott, two different Toms, gave us Paul's information, he knew nothing about Tenaska or anything associated with them. And so Mr. Rogers and I agreed to mutually pause our conversation to be able to notify you of that connection between them and Tenaska for that contract. He's more than willing to answer any questions, those sorts of things, should you have any. And I will say, he was probably hands down one of the most knowledgeable individuals I've ever talked to about battery storage, with all the research and everything he's done and everything he's been a part of through 855, the fire service and everything else. And while all this was happening, Ms. Johnson was able to get in contact with Chief Eiler, who's also got a lot of firefighting experience as well. He comes in as the chief of the Southwest Central Fire Territory. He's got, he's a veteran of the service for over 20 years, having served in South Bend as an engine captain and serving on hazmat one, as well as several other things throughout the fire service and Department of Homeland Security. So he's got a wealth of knowledge and experience that he'll be able to share with you this evening. So I'd like to welcome up Chief Eiler to be able to help share information and a lot of his expertise with you. And I'll turn it over to him. Chief Eiler, if you could come up, please. It's a fun, exciting table in front of us.
Like Ty said, my name is Daryl Eiler. I was born and raised in Argus, so Marshall County is definitely in my heart. Live in San Joe County now. Ty said, I've got, May of this year is my 40th year in the fire service. Started off as a volunteer in Argus. Served in the Marine Corps and was hazmat team leader for almost 20 years with South Bend. So I don't really know what I'm supposed to talk about. Open to questions. I can answer questions, lead in the right direction, I hope. I've been working with and speaking with the firefighters in New Carlisle. They're building a huge battery facility over there and been dealing with them, with their challenges and getting some information from them. So any questions you have for me or anything I can answer?
What kind of challenges have the New Carlisle folks had?
First of all, there's no fire codes in Indiana pertaining to battery storage facilities. They're in the process of rewriting the Indiana fire codes now. How the Indiana fire codes work is they take the National Fire Codes, Indiana then adopts them and then does amendments to those. So as builders or companies or agencies or fire service see some changes that they'd like to see to the National Code to meet what Indiana wants, they submit those, those go through a process and then they're added. So again, right now, there are no updated fire codes in Indiana. I think 2019 was the last update, and there's nothing on electrical battery storage or electric EVs in the fire code.
The state law talks about the NFPA 855, and that's what they reference as, as the guidelines. Do you have experience with that code?
I went through it briefly. Again, I've talked to Chad Hess, he's the matter expert at New Carlisle. Again, a lot of that is based on the battery industry, what they can do and can't do. And the battery industry is going to do what they can do to make the most money. That's what NFPA does when those, each standard has a board or a set of individuals that sit on that committee. And when it deals with buildings, when it deals with electric, when it deals with plumbing, those individuals are going to do the best they can so their constituents can make the most money they can. They're going to do it safely, but they're going to do it as bare, bare minimum. So the fire service, they try to get representatives in there to look at the safety side of things and make sure that it's safe for the customers and the firefighters.
There are a number of fire, you know, Phoenix Fire Department, New York Fire Department on this, on their committee. Have you had experience working with that, that, their process at all?
Not on any of the committees, no. But I've submitted some ideas for like the hazmat committees for 1704, 704, and some of those hazmat side of things.
In NFPA?
Yeah, NFPA, but have not sat on any committees, no. Yeah, there's a lot of firefighters on the different committees, again, for the safety of their customers and firefighters, definitely.
Yeah.
So the one, the one you're aware of up in San Joe County, that one, that one's already been approved to be in construction or they're going through the process?
In the process. They're constantly working with the county building commissioners and the council and the county commissioners to come up the best plan possible. Talking again with Chad Hess, the Assistant Chief of New Carlisle, he said basically they're winging it. They're trying to build things as they go as far as safety and concerns of the public.
So they don't have the kind of regulations that we've even proposed? They don't have anything like that, then? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure what regulations they have or you have. I haven't seen either one of those, so I can't speak on that.
Fair enough.
And if I was given a copy, I apologize for not looking at that.
No, but yeah, that's, and I'm going to give you an out, unless you're the third guy and, you know, that we've been trying to get coming in to talk to us. So I appreciate you coming, so please don't take that as a slap at all. We appreciate your comments and definitely want as much input as we can get, so we make our intelligent decisions.
I can speak more on the vehicle battery side. The last three years, I've had the opportunity to work at the world's largest fire conference with EV vehicles. And if there's electric vehicle fire, every instructor I spoke to that specializes in EVs had bring 10 or 15,000 gallons of water with you because you're not putting it out. So when these things get going, it's not a, it's not a good day. And the few fires that I've researched at some of these facilities, they've been all day, few day fires and millions of gallons of water. So if they have their, they start having a meltdown, it's not a, it's not a good day for anybody. And then my concern is the hazmat guy is the chemicals that are coming off these in the smoke. That it is, it's a very rapid progressing fire. And if you, if you're not cooling things down quickly, you're never going to get ahead of it until basically everything's gone, so.
So would that, that experience or that exposure would be in reference to, we'll call it the older style batteries, or have you got experience with the batteries that are, you know? The batteries we went and looked at, you know, when we were looking at different battery parks or farms or whatever you want to call it, they were small, but they seem to be a little different construction from what maybe you're referring to there.
Yeah, there's three types. There's the cylindrical, which we're all used to, you know, your batteries you put in your flashlight. There's a prismatic, those are the kind of flat that are going in into these type of facilities and cars. Then they have, I can't remember the name of the style, but that's the one that goes like in your computers and those type of things. They're all so flat, but they're different than the prismatic style.
So like from my, my understanding when we went and visited a battery storage facility, the system was designed to where if it was detecting a possible thermal runaway, it would automatically shut down, start cooling measures and would seal itself off to try and snuff out the fire. Kind of hearing like what you're talking about and seeing that at the facility that we visited, what is the likelihood of that fire actually coming outside of that sealed off container and spreading?
If they have a good system, I would not know that answer, but again, if they get out of that system, then what, how close is the next storage facility? How many batteries are in the facility that has the, the heat issue and then the thermal runaway?
That's kind of what, that's why I was kind of referring to. What we seen, they were in steel containers and they controlled the atmosphere inside that container temperature wise, but they were 10, 15 foot apart, each one of them?
Yes.
And they were, we're talking on cement pillars and gravel, big, big, you know, and so they kind of give us the appearance or at least the understanding that if something went wrong, it'd be very difficult for it to get to the next one. And these, even inside these, they were individual sections, not, it wasn't one big huge battery and, and, you know, like, like what we see in cars just huge. It was very small little thing. You could pull one out and it wouldn't affect the rest of them. And that's, that's what I found kind of fascinating with the automated stuff they had built into it. It was able to detect and literally shut that unit down and do the suppression part on that unit, which wouldn't affect the other one. Obviously, it shut the whole unit down till they felt somebody could come out and check it out, make sure it was safe. But I, that's what I was looking for, if there were any, any kind of experience or exposure to those kinds of systems that they're building now.
I have not, and I don't, I don't know if anybody in this area, fire wise, has.
That's why we were hoping to be able to get, you know, the gentleman that you've, you've found.
I don't know.
I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to beat you up at all.
Oh, no, I'm not taking it as a, no.
I appreciate it.
I don't take that at all. Yeah, I don't know if New Carlisle's been out to see any facilities. I'm sure they have. Chad did not speak to me at that. I didn't ask him a lot of questions, but I will definitely go back with more questions because obviously that's what this is about, is back and forth and everybody learning and hopefully doing the best we can to keep the community safe.
And we're, we're trying to get information, you know, yeah, it's great that we got it from the battery supplier or the, the, the company that put the battery, but it'd be nice to get, we'll call it the third party opinion, so we're, we're looking at it like this rather than like this.
Chief Eiler, I have a few questions for you. So with the protection of your firefighters, where would you feel it being safe for a distance between these containers? I know in the proposed ordinance, it's three foot.
To me, that's, that seems very close. Again, I don't know what the container construction is.
Okay.
Or what the fire suppression system is, but that just seems to be awful close to me as a firefighter to have something that could have a thermal runaway and be that close to another storage unit.
Chief, Chief Eiler, I have a question for you as well, kind of going off of what the question was before. I'm no expert in the fire industry whatsoever and not really fully aware of all the tools, but I've heard that there is a new tool out for electric vehicles that kind of helps, oh, descents decode it for these fires? Have you heard anything on that tool? It's kind of like to help put out that fire and it like deactivates something or does something?
Now, once they're, once they have thermal runaway, it's near impossible to have anything other than, they are, they are coming up with these thermal blankets they're putting over the cars.
Okay.
And they're also, different companies or manufacturing does, devices that you can slide under that blanket and also input water in that also.
Okay.
But then again, now you're putting water into a battery, so now you're flushing out the, the acids or the electrolytes. So now you got the contaminants and the runoff of that.
A whole nother issue.
So it's just kind of a.
Okay, I was just wondering if, if you knew of it, what that technology was there and if it could spill on over into best systems and that kind of stuff? So thank you for your answer.
I will just tell you, Southwest response to a car, electric car fire, which we haven't had one, is if there's no exposure, we're going to let it burn.
Yep.
Until it's completely gone. That's the best thing we can do for the environment and the firefighters.
So what is your evacuation area when one of these burns?
I'd have to look at what the, the.
The chemical is?
ERG is, but usually it's initially it's 200 to 300 feet, but once those get thermal runaway, depends on the wind and then we'll, we'll build from that.
Carbon dioxide is one of the biggest things that is, escapes when there's one of these fires, correct?
Carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, there's.
Your, your ERG?
Yeah.
Says one mile.
Again, I did look to ERG before I came up here.
No, that's a campfire right here.
Most fires are 200 or 300 feet, but I believe that.
Yeah. So in knowing some of these chemicals and, and when they're released in one of these fires, what is your evacuation period or your evacuation spacing when a car battery just per se, because that's what we were talking about, catches on fire?
So again, you said one mile, so.
For carbon dioxide.
So what we would do is, is we would immediately get ahold of our dispatch. They can do a reverse 911, call anybody downwind and have them shelter in place.
Okay.
So that would be, that'd be the best thing to do is keep people inside, secure their, their structure they're in and then evacuate the area as far as traffic.
Until it all burns out.
Until it all burns out.
Chief, you were saying about the fires, how many thousands of gallons of water do they recommend? So does your hazmat team consider that water that's expended contaminated, that has to be cleaned up some way?
Yeah, yep. So again, that's where you would go with a vehicle, let it burn. We've let six, 7,000 gallon fuel trucks on the, on the bypass burn up for that very reason is it's expenditure for the trucking company is going to be a lot less because basically the product's gone, there's no runoff, very little to, to clean up or mitigate later. Storage facility, I would assume, I would hope they would have some type of containment within their facility if something like that were to happen that you can contain and keep the water on property.
Chief Eiler, what would a containment look like in that sense? Like, would it just kind of be a cement area? So like I know in the ag industry with chemicals and stuff, like we have cement areas and cement pads for that containment, would it look like that or piled up?
I could see that or so far down, have a heavy plastic liner with probably rocks or cement over the top of that.
What?
And then bermed up all the way around.
Okay, okay. What would the runoff look like on that kind of gallons of water used?
What, what do you mean by?
Or, so like the water runoff, if you use the 15, 20,000 gallons of water, if it did get to that point, it sounds like this is something you just let burn off. But if it did get to the point where you'd need to use that much water, what would the water runoff look like as far as like distance traveled and that kind of stuff?
Well, the first thing that we would try to do is, is get a, build our own containment right away before using that much water, try to keep it as close to onsite as possible.
Okay.
Because of a fire, if a fire department fails to control their runoff water, then they could also be liable for the cleanup cost as well. They, they need, they need to be smart about things they do as well.
Okay, thank you.
We talked about these risks to the community, you know, from this energy storage system for other sources of energy that we have. How, I mean, how, and you talked about the tanker trucks on the, on the toll road. How, I mean, how does this, or trains going through our community? You've got all the, a lot of trains in South Bend. Is, is your preparation for those potential accidents kind of similar to what you would do here? It's just a different technology or how would you compare those?
Again, I haven't, and shame on me, I haven't studied enough on the electric side of things, but definitely would be a lot of research, a lot of studying, a lot of training to get. And when I was on the hazmat team, what we did is we had hazmat specialists. My specialty was rail cars for railroad. So we, we had, you know, road truck specialist, we had rail specialist, fixed facility specialist. So now with this electric battery, I'm sure that's going to be a skill that's going to be definitely.
In demand.
In demand in the near future.
Have you been hearing of, of different classes and different trainings coming because of all of this? Have you been hearing any?
Just, just on the vehicle side.
Just on the vehicle side?
But again, as these facilities grow and there's definitely going to be training, I'm sure of that.
And railroad? That was another question that a constituent had, is the concern being so close to a railroad because the facility that is Marshall County is looking at is right next to a railroad? That was one of the questions on, should this be setbacks be different there, more concerned with the railroad?
That would probably be more of a question for the railroad themselves.
Okay.
My only concern would be a derailment and when, where those railcars would end up if by chance they would leave the tracks in that area.
And then, okay.
So.
Or a derailment with a fire with ethanol on there that spreads to batteries. Worst case scenario.
Right, I mean, that's, that's, that's the way we train is for the worst case scenario and hope that we never have it.
Chief Eiler, say you're at your fire station and in your territory, there's a bi, a battery storage facility that pops up overnight of the size that we're looking at here in Marshall County. And you walk in the next morning, what would be your first steps for your crew in working with the company as far as training goes, safety precautions and that kind of stuff?
Onsite tours, pre-planning, facility prints, and then what, find out what their fire procedures are and how they would help us and how we could help them.
Thank you.
So each site being different, setting up each site because each site is different, is that, is that something that you would feel that the fire chiefs or the EMA, all of that could be involved in to help figure out where it sets best?
I, as the fire chief, I'd want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, because again, you, you want to make sure that you have access to get in, to get equipment in, where everything's at, any safety equipment they have that we can shut down or don't want to shut down. That's very important to know.
So before it's even set up, this might be a good idea to have the fire chief in the area to, or all of them be a part of how it's set up?
I would definitely want the county chiefs. I would feel comfortable getting all the departments involved because if you have a facility of that size, and I've been on many fires in Marshall County, San Joe County, where we've had just about every department in the county there. So it's, it's good to train together, work together and know how these facilities are.
Isn't, isn't the, one of the codes that we got presented to us, isn't it a requirement when they put these things together that they have to provide that kind of training for the local fire departments? Isn't that, isn't that one of the codes?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would think so.
Ty, can you comment on that in the current ordinance draft?
The code you're referencing is Indiana code and it does include that.
They're, they're required to provide that for the local fire departments as part of the.
Annually, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and I referenced New Carlisle again because they're, they're building a facility there. They've been very active from the very start of it, working with the Plan Commission, building commissioners and all the whole stuff and.
When you say they, you're talking about the battery company or you?
Yes, working with the battery company and everybody asking questions and making recommendations and, again, I don't know what all of those are because I haven't had a chance to really sit down with Chad and digest all that. But after getting contacted to come down here, it's definitely got my wheels turning more because that facility is close enough that we're definitely going there. Heaven forbid there's an issue, so.
That's a factory though, right? They're not, that's not going to be an operational storage, so it's a little different than what we're looking at here.
I'm not for sure what, what, I don't know if they have storage or if they're manufacturing, but.
I think it's a manufacturing facility.
They've got so many different facilities going in New Carlisle right now. I'm not sure how they're even keeping up with what's coming into their, their fire district. Because I know they got some technology warehouses coming in and some Amazon storage facilities. They're talking about a big rail yard now. So, yeah, they've, they're, they've got quite a few projects going on at once.
And I feel that our protection of our firefighters and our EMTs and our, and first responders, all of that is one of the most important things that I want to make sure that it is covered in this ordinance.
Oh, absolutely. And then, and definitely the, the community, what, what I call our customers, we definitely got to look out for them as well and make sure that we're well trained so we can provide that protection for them as well.
So when you were talking about the NFPA's setbacks, we were looking at, I think the proposed ordinance is 100 foot from, from a, I think it was a, tell me, was it from the property line or how did that work? One, one of them. And with this facility, I mean, these batteries being that close, knowing, and we have to set it up for not if, but when we have an issue, where is that a safe space, would you feel?
So if the standard is saying 100 feet, they've definitely researched that. What they're looking at when they set those standards is the fire protection system that they have, early notification systems. You're talking property line, so I would.
What it actually, what it actually says, it does say 100 foot property line, but it says residential dwelling setback for battery units is 250 foot, and then non-residential structure setback is 200 foot. So, yeah, property, they got to be at least 100 foot from the property line, but if there's a residence, they got to be 250 foot from that. So.
And they're a buffer too.
Yes. Thank you. Because it has buffer right there, right beside the next paragraph.
And that's going to be a live, should be a live material, which should kind of help a little bit.
Would that make sense to have a buffer as a live material? In a fire, you certainly wouldn't want that.
It's a, if it's a live material, it might actually help put out the fire.
What are, what are they, do they specify what a buffer is?
So shall provide an adequate visual four season screen while within 250 feet of residences and where required by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And shall remove dead or fallen trees, replanting for the life of the project, so.
Yeah, trimming if necessary.
Maintaining the buffer.
Yeah, it's going to be green, it's going to be live, it's not going to be the dead stuff to catch.
It further states, should provide a copy of the emergency response plan that
It further states, should provide a copy of the emergency response plan that addresses the requirements set forth in NFP 855. So I, I mean, there's kind of a comprehensive plan that is gonna be provided, that is gonna provide, all that information you were talking about is gonna be provided to the...
As part of our ordinance, they have to do that, period.
The commissioning plan.
And I would rather see the NFP 855 printed out on here rather than having to go to some site that you have to check into to get your email to get a code to get in there and see it.
Yeah. Is there, is there rules in, in preventing, preventing us from printing that out?
I don't know what sort of copyright you might get into with NFPA.
I understand what you're saying, Deb, because we need to know that.
I know, I know there's been discussions between NFPA and ICC because they usually coincide together for IFC code, International Fire Code, and NFPA are usually very, very similar, often having some nuanced words changed, which gets you a little bit more away from copyrighting aspects because they're two different entities.
Well, I see this almost as if I was gonna be signing a contract and I didn't have in front of me what the actual plan is, I wouldn't sign that contract.
My question is, if you actually put that wording in this document and they update that wording, we're not gonna have the update to it versus if you reference it.
Yeah.
If you reference it, then...
It's always gonna be updated.
Yeah, it's always gonna be updated, we're always gonna have the newest.
We had that discussion, I remember us talking about that. That's the reason we didn't do that.
Yeah.
We could still update ourselves if we know that that is coming out.
Who's gonna sit there and watch the updates though?
There's a lot of people out there that are watching updates, yeah.
Who, who within the county is gonna sit there and watch the updates? Are we gonna create a new position just to sit there and watch it or?
Which we don't have the authority to do no matter what, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, you're fine, no, you're fine.
Does anybody have anything else?
On, on these larger proposed sites, like a five, 10 acre site, do you foresee the fire departments need any additional equipment to battle these or what you have is pretty much?
I would, depending on where they're at and how close they are to any city water system, you would definitely want some type of water supply closed.
Okay. When you say close, let's be, I'll be real specific. Is 10 miles close, is 20 miles?
I mean, literally outside the gate. I, I don't know if I'd want fire hydrants inside the facility, but definitely a water source or a large pond that you can draft from close. But yeah, you definitely want a water source.
That's actually a good question because I, I hadn't thought about that. Because if they have to go all the way to Culver, that's...
A well that can pump that, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, then, then what is their city system able to supply?
On an ongoing basis, you know, pretty 20,000 gallons in the next two hours type thing.
Can you take water out of a river?
Yes, river, ponds.
What's a tanker normally carry?
Anywhere from average 1,500 to 3,000 gallons.
Would we want to do that to the Yellow River though? Like, be able to pull off the Yellow River?
I guess, I mean, what, if there was a train wreck...
Depending on the time of the year and then what, what type of drafting capabilities you have. Because if it's shallow, you're gonna get into mud and stuff, you're not gonna be able to, to draft from that.
Well, then let me ask this million-dollar question. Does it make sense for us to require that they have eight-inch or 10-inch or 12-inch well right there for a fire department to have access to?
Yeah, that would be definitely a good start.
What size of well do fire trucks usually fill up at?
And just a, we're fortunate that we have several hydrants in our, my department, we cover just shy of 75 square miles. And we cover the unincorporated areas around South Bend. So we have some hydrants in some of our housing additions from the city. So we're fortunate to have some hydrants, but we're either going to Lakeville, North Liberty, or back up to South Bend to tie into hydrants. But again, it depends on the size of the water main and, and the flow that you have in those hydrants, what you're...
You know, like the North Liberty water main may be four-inch or six-inch water main. And so I'm talking about an eight-inch or 12-inch well that's gonna have more capacity than what you're gonna be able to get from the city of North Liberty. And plus, how long, you know, we're getting into technical stuff that's real above me by far, how long does it take you to empty out a 3,000 gallon tanker truck?
Two minutes or less.
Okay, you dump it into another...
Portable tank.
Tank, and then you go get another load. And so if you have three or four trucks running, you can keep it running. So...
It's a continuous, yeah.
But if we had a, had a pump or well there, it would be filling it all the time anyway.
We just need an irrigation well. That's big enough to deep enough.
We're making fun, but it's really pretty serious.
And we have some farmers in our area that have set them up so we can use those if we need to. So they, they have tied a system off.
And I'm, I'm pretty sure there's some irrigation out that way too.
Yeah.
And then ponds, they have what they call dry hydrants. You can put in a heavy-duty PVC pipe and you're able to draft from ponds. And it's like hooking up to a hydrant.
Yeah.
Is this the type of information that's in these plans, those emergency response plans that are required to be developed? Like where the water's gonna come from? We don't have to figure that out here, do we?
It should be in the emergency response plan. I definitely think so.
Okay. We're getting into the mud, but, okay. But still, I appreciate asking the question because I want to know that.
Yeah. We just need to put like a whole irrigation system in here for emergency purposes.
All right, we know, we know you work for the extension office, so let's...
So getting back to this, to like pulling water from the rivers and ditches and, and such or ponds, does the DNR get involved in that?
The, all lakes, or not lakes, maybe lakes, but I know all rivers are property of the DNR here in Indiana.
So then...
So like, if you were to fly a drone over a river, you need DNR permission to be able to do that.
So then if you're taking water from the river, you would have to set that up as well, is what I'm assuming?
I would think, I would think the fire department would supersede any of that stuff. They have the right to do what they need to do.
They probably have something standing with them, yeah.
I'm, I'm getting off my professional too.
The, the, the DNR provides grants for those dry hydrants. So that would be a source that the emergency response plan, whoever's in charge of that could get ahold of and see how they could help with water sources.
If you had a barn fire next to the Yellow River and you need to pull water out of the river, you can do that without getting DNR.
I would believe so, yeah. I would do it.
Okay. Right. Thank you. That makes sense. It does. But it's still a smart question to ask. Thank you.
Chief Eiler, just kind of looking through our ordinance up here, what we currently have looking at site plan reviews. Earlier you mentioned, I asked the question about what would you do if one just popped, popped into your area overnight, kind of doing that review. Would it be beneficial for fire departments to have that site plan review before it's even built or in the planning phases so that way they can put input in?
Oh, I would definitely want to be involved in that entire process because I'd want to know, like the, the setbacks and, and, and what they're building there and, and how much. And because then that helps us plan what, what we need to do for our department as well as mutual aid departments.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I would definitely want to be involved from start to finish.
Parking plans, like turning the trucks around, clear down to all that stuff as well. Okay.
Access in, access out, those type of things.
So then if there's changes during these projects, maybe they add on or they add more, is that in something else that the fire department should be informed of or a part of that process as well?
Again, I think they should be involved start to finish because once it's completed, they're the ones that's probably gonna be the first one to respond out there if there's ever an issue.
Right.
So I, I would, me personally, I would want to be involved start to finish. Or somebody from my staff.
And even in between if there's any change?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Again, that would be part of the emergency response plan. If you put any changes or anything, the fire department would have to be notified.
Well, even the, the planning of it and the building of it, I, they, I would, I'd want to be involved in.
Sure.
I'd want to be involved in everything. But yeah, the emergency response plan as well, definitely.
Okay. I don't. I don't think so. We really appreciate your coming in though.
Oh, yeah.
Wish I had more information for you.
No, you did great. Thank you.
You did. You had more than we had, so I sincerely appreciate your effort and your time and, and hopefully you'll feel more educated from it after it's over too. So thank you.
That's my plan, to always learn.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then that, that was the purpose of this meeting. Do you guys have anything else that we need to bring up? Part of our work session?
Well, I've learned a little bit more in the last couple of weeks. And I've learned, let me see, let me go over my notes here. When they, when they bring the batteries in, supposedly they have to be charged at a specific amount because as soon as it gets under a specific amount is when it becomes volatile or it, that's when, when fires or overheating can happen. So bringing these batteries in have to come in at a certain and, and any of them leaving have to come into a certain. So what is set up in this that if, if there is a power outage, yes, I understand their battery, but I also understand that there's failures too. What happens if we lose charge out there? What covers us? What protects us from those batteries getting under that 30%?
I would think they're, I appreciate what you're asking, but I would think their system that they put in place would obviously, you know, hey, you're down to 30%, this is no longer a viable option, that that closes that system down completely. You're not gonna be able to keep, keep going. And then they won't be able to sell the electricity because they're not really running anything. They're selling this electricity back to the grid, as far as I'm concerned. Or as far as I've heard, this one that you're talking about here, this isn't one that's gonna be running a housing development, this isn't gonna be running anything else. So when it gets to that point, it ju, it just shuts off. It's like it's out of gas. Even though it says 30%, they shut it off and don't, don't drain it any further. So you don't have any, I'm making an assumption here, I'm not the battery expert, but, but, but that's the way I thought when she was explaining that to us when we were out there looking at it. There, it's, it's an automated system, but they have fail safes in place too. That if it, if the automated system doesn't work, well, that means the temperature's gonna start rising. Well, that's another failsafe. You know, there's, there's backups to the backup.
Yeah. So the system you're talking about is a BMS system, correct?
Yeah.
BMS.
BMS would be Battery Management System, yeah. And that's a part of 855 and regulated by the state.
We have 15 minutes before our next meeting. If you guys want to take a break, then we can come back in for our next meeting. Or did you have something else you wanted to discuss?
Do you want guidance now?
I would advise you to adjourn your work session. Take up your regular session at 7 o'clock as you normally would.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn the work session.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second to adjourn the work session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose is the same.